Call this 40 minute order six oh one.
Mayor Hicks?
President.
Counselor Garcia?
Here.
Counselor Lucero?
Here.
Counselor Redarte?
Here.
Counselor Padilla?
Here.
Ah, would you please stand in charge of the Pledge of Legions? Before we do this though, does anybody out there recognize what the DNC did for the Pledge of Legions? They took the words "under God" out of the Pledge of Legions. That's what the National Committee did. When they sent the Pledge of Legions in their.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoorah! Do we love the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
My second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Citizens to address, Eyal Peterson, up next.
May I stay back here, please, if I use my teacher's voice?
You bet you, if you use that strong voice, Mr. Peterson have at it.
Thank you. Um, council members, Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, and concerned citizens, uh, thank you for listening to me. Uh, earlier, I contacted Laura with a question about eminent domain, because someone in the community had asked me about that in regards to some of the derelict buildings. And she very graciously answered the question. And if any of you are interested, I'm sure she'll do the same for you. And, uh, Mark was kind enough to give me an update about the work that's being done in the fish pond, where the ducks live. Even showed pictures of what has been done. So, I thank you, and if people are interested, I'm sure again that Mark would be kind enough to show you and explain. And I have a question about the last time I was here, I asked if any of you knew about the school board's policy regarding the public use of the high school track. Now, I'm curious, has there been an update?
Can I ask that? Ma'am, I did have, uh, took the opportunity to visit with the school board member,
Yes.
Ronald Pease, and he says they're gonna revisit it, and, because they do have security, and the biggest reason that they closed that, the track down is because people were throwing a lot of trash, and, and so, they had to, you know, close it because of that, but he says they're gonna revisit it and see if they can take some steps to where if someone wants to be on the track, maybe they can go sign up and, and be on there, so it is being addressed.
Thank you. And I believe the school board needs tomorrow. So, if any of you are interested, I believe at four thirty in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Laura Wesley.
I've got one of those loud voices too, so probably don't need this either. But, um, one of the things I wanted to address was the census. Because we, first of all, I need to recognize two people that have worked tirelessly on the census. And that is, um, Anna Larson and, uh, Chris Royball. They have worked so hard on getting the census done, however, we are only at thirty percent. And we've got a month to go. Period. So, we need, we want highways, we want bridges, we want things in our city. So, if you don't sign up for the census, then don't complain. Because this is your way to be counted. And another thing I should mention is that I personally have received a couple of text messages from someone claiming to be the census, and they wanted information on tracking for the COVID. That does not, the census does not do that. So, if you receive any of those messages that claim that they're from the census and they're tracking for COVID, it is not true. Delete it, get rid of it, block them. Um, that is not part of what census does. And the other topic is grocery receipts tax. We have several new businesses in our community. And our community is dependent upon gross receipts, receipts tax. When I say "community," I mean our city is dependent upon gross receipts tax. If we don't support our local businesses, maybe we don't need to support our city either. So, the money needs to stay in our community. Go and check out all these new businesses that are around our community, and see if you can't support them. Thank you very much for your attention, and, um, have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Open the comment discussion on charter. Anybody got anything to say about the charter? You are in compliance with the charter. Thank you. Do you have a regular city, regular city council meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting as is.
Second.
My second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Independent traffic studies. Fred, I put this one up there for you.
Okay.
Uh, independent traffic studies. You wanna do an independent traffic study, say over there, where those five houses are. They're complaining cars are going through there looking. There's thousands of them. And if we do that, a stipulation that I would make is that we put a camera on there so we don't have something in the neighborhood driving over it a hundred times. Okay? The second stipulation that I would make is that we put another one up, say on Iron Street, and use for another thruway,
Uh huh.
And see what we got there, I don't know what it costs, uh, maybe Mario could give us a direction there, I think it's somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars, to do this type of study.
Well, I noticed the Department of Transportation has put one up there before. And, uh, I called the Department of Transportation, and-
There was one there on Balsam, on a, on a State Street?
On Truman. There was one on Truman. And, uh, the DOT did affirm to me that there was one there at one time, but it wasn't done by the DOT. It was by, done by somebody in Santa Fe. And they assured me that they're gonna contact them and have them contact us, but I haven't heard nothing uh, as of today. And, uh, just to kinda add to that, uh, Counselor Padilla and, uh, City Manager and I were over there the other day. We stood, uh, at where, right there where Mesa and Truman intersect. And we stood there for a good while. And, uh, the traffic was amazing there, we seen traffic coming from, from the Los Alamitos side crossing over to Truman down to the, to the Balsam side. It, there was more traffic coming from this way than there was traffic going the other way. And we also seen a few speeders that, that drove by, but, uh, there is a lot of traffic there, we can, we seen that physically, so. That's, that's what I said.
Is that, was that a system that we can tie in with our police department on their, maybe on their comm side?
No, it would be, it would be an independent study, Rick, because our cops don't have, our little speed sign doesn't have the ability to do that, to pick up speed, pictures, everything that we need.
Mm-hmm.
The car count, how much it weighs, you know, all that good stuff. Cause it tells you if it's a truck, it tells you if it's an eighteen wheeler, it tells you if it's a plus. And that's what I'm talking about, I was just thinking about comparing them
Yes.
to Iron Street, which is right here, which everybody uses to cut through and to come, well, we don't have anybody hardly working anymore, so that might not be a fair comparison.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think that it would be a good idea.
If you wanna do it, put the motion forward, and we'll put it on.
Well, do you know-
Mario, you got anything to say about your independent traffic study, didn't you?
Uh, yes, Mayor, so what I was gonna explain to council is, uh, there, there's very degrees, but I believe what we're talking about here is you're looking to identify speed, if people are speeding.
None of them, congestion.
Okay, yeah, so typically, there's two types of counters, we draw two counters, which is what Mayor's talking about, people running over back and forth, they can do that. But those will pick up speed, they will pick up, um, functional classification, which is what Mayor was alluding to, the, the size of the axle, so it can tell the type of vehicle that's going through there. And, uh, we will also pick up volume, ADT, I don't know what type of speed. So, those are the three things that those two counters, there are new counters that we are using, we were using them in Gallup, now they have video camera. And so, we can actually mount that, it'll pick up the same three things, speed, volume, functional classification, and then it, it actually is a video, so it'll record, it's fifty hours, it'll do fifty hours. Typical counts are forty-eight hour counts. So, um, it, it, it's not necessarily a hundred thousand dollars, it's actually not, if you use the basic counters, their two hundred fifty dollars a day is what it costs to, to lay them down. And, um, and then we get the data, we can show you what the data is, it counts in fifteen minute increments. Um, but yeah, it'll tell you if people are speeding, and, and then we can also work with Chief of Police and make sure that, uh, if you're not aware, uh, federal government and state governments have, uh, a mandate in place, so whenever there's an accident, law enforcement goes and documents the type of accident, time of day, cause of the accident, with, whether it's, you know, DUI, or poor lighting, or an intensive ride, those sort of things, whether it's property damage or not. All of that information gets sent to Santa Fe. It's maintained in a crash database, UNN manages that. So, hopefully, hopefully, uh, there are time, plenty of time where we maybe have to step back a little bit and spend some time with law enforcement, but that information is very important because then that three-year crash, that allows municipalities to go after safety improvement lines. So, I hope that, that, that gives you some information, but essentially, if you wanna do it, the basic counters, they work. They're two hundred and fifty dollars a day, they're forty-eight hour counts, you can pick up speed, volume, and vehicle functional classification, and then, from there-
That's one with the video camera that shoots the-
The video camera, I'll have to get that number, sir, cause that's brand-new technology, it just came out this year, as I remember.
I'm good with Fred, if you wanna do a study, man, let's, I'm good with it, I, like I said, the only stipulation I want is that we have a camera on the, on the two,
Okay.
on the two places.
One question.
Especially two hundred fifty dollars a day, that ain't nothing to figure out.
What question, uh? Typically, when you, when you put a system like that, do you do it for like a week, two weeks, a month, or?
There are forty-eight hour counts, is what we're required to do. Um, some people like to set them out there longer. So, if you wanted to, say, leave it out there for two weeks, um, you could.
Well, it, it will also measure like, it's a traffic, there's more traffic there on a Saturday than a, than a Monday, or something like that.
Yeah, so, so, we have criteria. What we're required to do is to pick it on an average day, so typically, we conduct counts between Mondays and Thursdays, we don't conduct them on weekends because those are special days, and we don't conduct them around holidays. Because those aren't real, they're abnormal, they don't tell what the average travel patterns are. What you wanna do is identify what the average travel patterns are. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I-
So, I'm-
Well, I'll, no, I agree with you.
I'm wondering, uh, when we were out there the other day, did you gentlemen see enough to feel like we know that there is a lot of traffic on that road, and that, um, it's enough that we wanna try to create some other avenue for, for people, for future use?
Well, I know that, you know, speed for myself, we do, we were there, what, for a half an hour or so?
We had a lot of traffic though.
And, uh, I was amazed at the traffic, I was-
I was too.
really amazed.
And that traffic, you're gonna divert it through someplace else, so someone else is gonna-
Well, we're looking at some options that, uh, Laura's been doing a lot of research in that area. And, uh, if there's a way that we can, um, kind of develop a different option for that traffic, um, I think that would alleviate a lot of the traffic congestion there.
Some people just go straight instead of going to the street.
You're talking about decaying this right now?
No, no, you would leave that open. Yes. That we're thinking one, or someone goes this way, and get either a cop or a racer or change. It would alleviate some of that.
Straight to Walmart.
Well, you know where, uh, that Greg House is? That two-story house?
Yeah, straight down, straight down the, straight down the gas pipeline.
And Laura said that we, the city already has the right of ways there.
Yeah, they already have that right of way, the school's own that. And so, eventually, maybe put a new school there someday, but this is going to grow eventually, so we give a road for that nature. Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Whatever you want.
Well, um, I, I think we are, we already know at this point that, uh,
The traffic?
The traffic is already there, and I don't know if any, any measuring of it at this point will add any more information to what we already have. I know last council meeting, the chief-
But here's my question to you.
Yes.
We pay and we do that road, and it doesn't alleviate the traffic.
Well, that's, uh, that's, that's, that is something that, if it doesn't alleviate it, what it's going to do is it's gonna generate uh, another area where if, like Laura says, if grants grows in that direction, it's gonna be a plus anyway.
That's fine. So, we're not gonna do a traffic count?
Well, I think, uh, the one that you mentioned over here on, on, on my air, I think that might be a good idea there.
I was just comparing it, cause I wanted to have a comparison with that one over there. Yeah, a lot of traffic too, higher. Oh yeah, I bet it does.
And I don't know how we can, um, divert some of the traffic from there. It started being used quite a bit, so. But up there, we, we have a possible solution that could bring some, cause all the traffic was, we seen it clearly, it was, and it was just about a half an hour timeframe, and we'd have been there all day.
And school's not even in session where people are taking their kids to the mid-school. So, I think when that's in session, it's even more.
And then, another, another thing that, that, uh, could, um, also be a plus on that is traditionally back there is where all these kids are on their four-wheelers, and, and if we have a road through there, it could probably minimize that, because I know that, um, Mr. Bynes was concerned about all the kids over there that could get hurt when they're out there four-wheeling, cause, you know, they're, they like to go mess around and play, so that could alleviate maybe some of that as well.
Might alleviate, uh, legal dumping back there with more traffic coming through there where people would be less likely, cause there's cars coming by?
Yeah, that's true, that, that too. I think there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of pluses with, with us going in that direction. I think for now, I think it would be a good idea for us to continue to study this, what, uh, you, did you already get a surveyor out there?
I talked to Mark, and so, we can work on getting a surveyor out there, so that we survey, we're not working on any private land, it's our right of way that we're working on. And then our street department could start some dirt work.
I think, uh, we should get this portion, portion done first, and then we could maybe readdress this at some time down the road.
And make sure we're not in, uh, violation with any of the gas company, um, needs, because the gas line does go through there too.
No, and I still think we need to fix High Street and Anderson down there that's wasted before we ever put a road anywhere else. There's roads that we tore up, trying to fix them, that need to be done and replaced. If you can ban down High Street, you know it. And that's our fault. We did that, nobody else did that, City Grants did that. And that should take priority. Cause there's a lot of people who use those roads there too.
Well, I had another, another road brought to my attention up there on Roosevelt, going up behind the schools that were, that recently-
Yeah, they're home there too.
Yeah.
I mean, those need to be our priorities, fixing those roads, guys, before we start adding a road that might or might not alleviate traffic. I mean, because those are roads that we, we did that. City Grants did that. So, we need to fix those before we worry about fixing, paving a brand-new road, guys. That's just my opinion. I mean, you guys got the works, you'll do what you wanna do.
Well, I think Laura can give us, uh, all the information that we need when they do the survey and stuff like that, and see what we're looking at.
Next application for planning and zoning commission, Jamie Holton. Anybody have a problem with Jamie?
Not at all.
Will you entertain a motion?
I made a motion to accept, uh, Jamie Holton as the, uh, party for planning and zoning commission.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Planning and zoning, Josephina Ratao, anybody got a problem with her? Will you entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept, uh, Josephina Ratao, planning and zoning.
Second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Sylvia Anzures Gonzalez, planning and zoning, anybody got a problem now?
No.
Will you entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept Sylvia Anzures Gonzalez, planning and zoning.
Second.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Recreation Board, Norman Patterson. Anybody got a problem with her?
Make a motion for Norman Patterson, Recreation Board.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Next one, Anne Marie Lopez. Anybody got a problem with her?
I make a motion?
Second.
Second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero? Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
RFP, water.
Uh, Mayor, Manager, Council, in, uh, twenty nineteen, we went to RFP for the USDA projects, uh, water and wastewater. And, uh, in September, we did interviews, uh, there was a four committee member. I don't wanna give out names right now, but there was, uh, three employees of the city and one contractor who, uh, does work for the city. I wasn't on the committee. Anyway, we done the interviews in September, and, uh, they'll walk. First, there was one respondent to the RFP, and that was Wilson and Company. They were their lone respondent, prior to September, and then in September, we done the interviews. And, uh, the average score was, I believe, eighty-eight out of a hundred. So, the committee chose Wilson and Company for the RFP. Uh, however, I made a mistake, and I never came to council to officially award them the RFP, instead, I came to council for the PBR and the, uh, the design tasks for the projects. I, I made the error, and I skipped that one step of bringing it to council to officially award Wilson and Company. That was my error. And so, now, we're, I'm coming back, I mean, it's not like something was hidden, I mean, you guys were aware of what was going on, the PRs were awarded the design to both projects. Anyway, we just need a backup, and we need to officially award Wilson and Company the RFP, uh, number twenty nineteen zero two two zero. And, and it's really primarily because, I mean, there are requirements as you go through these projects. Uh, USDA can alert me on this, I found it myself, as I was reviewing the file. And once in a while, I'll go through the project files and I'll check this, check this, check this. And I forgot to bring this to you guys. Well, I actually, it was right, right at the beginning of the COVID time, maybe I had some of those. Maybe not.
Questions?
Maybe I had issues. Anyway, my recommendation is that it be awarded to Wilson and Company, we've already awarded them the PBRs and awarded them the design. And we, we had awarded them, the committee did, but I had to bring it to you guys to officially award. My error.
Questions?
Is that gonna change anything?
No.
What's that? Is that gonna change anything?
No.
No. Cause this is okay.
It's, it's, it's a finality that I forgot.
Three dashes with a wet noodle? Second?
I was gonna say if the Spanish read, but-
I, I don't know how you keep track of all these projects, we've had a lot, a lot going, going on, so it's it's quite a task.
Motion?
Now, so-
I'll make a motion that we approve this, uh, wastewater system improvement, RFP selection to Wilson and Company.
Resolution number twenty twenty six nine.
Yes.
My second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty sixteen ninety-one.
Okay, resolution, the, the next three agenda items are resolution sixty ninety-one, sixty ninety-two, and sixty ninety-three, they're all the water trust board projects that we have going. Uh, you guys have been made aware of them. This was about a year ago, whenever the mayor pointed out, I said we'd be lucky to get one, we got all three funded. So, anyway, uh, these are the resolutions, cause we, uh, the steps that you take, you, you put an application, they approve it, then it gets approved by the legislature, and then you have a project readiness, which is about a year after you do the application. Anyway, we're at that point now, and, uh, the, the readiness application requires a res- a resolution that the governing board, you guys, uh, understand the loan amount, the grant amount, and the match amount. And each of these resolutions are clear on, uh, the amount of the award and how they're broken down. Now, this is for well number three, I believe, uh, resolution sixty nineteen, ninety-three is for well number three, sixty ninety-two is for the First Street Pond and Pump Station, and sixty, uh, ninety-one is for the Second Street Channel. I might have the last two mixed up. The-
That's great.
Yeah, so the, the well number three, you guys know that's a complete reconstruction of well number three. We all know we need that. We're dependent on this one that's not working a hundred percent. So, that one, uh, it's a one point six million dollar grant loan, I, I believe it's nine, uh, I see, nine sixty, a mountain grant, and six forty in the mountain loan. And it requires a match of one sixty. So, we'll need to budget that for next year.
Or does the one sixty come into play, uh?
Uh, uh, Mayor, Council, the one sixty is the match component to the application to the, to the well project.
We get the, uh, we get the, the, the nine sixty, the six forty, and the one sixty for the-
Is the same match.
Match.
Yeah. And, 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 uh, to strengthen your applications, um, and a match is required as part of the application, it's a ten percent match, that's where the one sixty came from. That's where the one sixty came from.
Well, that's why, that's why, cause I could say it could come in up, but all, all three, I won't get all this.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And then the, the Second Street Channel is the, the final bridge into the pack and the concrete channel up to the bridge that's being built now. So that will be concreted and the final bridge. That's the Second Street Channel Phase Two. And then the First Street Pond and Pump Station is a lift station and pond, uh, the old nights at Columbus property. The county donated that property, gave to the city for this project. And there will, we all know First Street's a low point. The, the project on First Street, it requires a, a pump station to get the water to the arroyo, so that, so the pond and pump station will go right there on that guy, on that guys property.
And where's that?
The old nights Columbus property.
Right there on, on Row.
On Row Geist.
On the Bow.
Exactly. Uh, Mario's here, Mark's here, so any questions? Ask him any questions.
Do we have time to do that? Or the, the, just what, the one here?
The First Street?
Yes.
Uh, the First Street Pond and Pump Station will coincide with the First Street project. We're starting First Street here in about November, and it's gonna be a year-long project. So we'll be about four, six months into the project whenever the First Street Pond and Pump Station. And that's perfect because they tie in together. All the drains on First Street will go to the uh, pond and then pump to the other way.
And we'll have to budget these, uh, ten percent for each project, right?
Correct. Yeah. And e- each year, whenever Laura asks me for my budget items, obviously, these are items that I consider and I include in the budget. So next, when we work our next year's budget, I'll include these matching lines.
So it's one, one hundred and sixty for each one? Is that what you think?
One sixty for the, the ones out of one point six, but the Second Street Channel, I believe, is one point two. So the match is a little lower. I believe it's one twenty.
Identify yourself for the record and ask your question.
Sandy Encino. I own the bowling center. Could you tell me where that pond is going to be?
Right, uh, across from your property where the little pop, pump.
Oh, so I give mosquito bill?
While.
You put standing water there, you're gonna have mosquitoes.
The, the, the pond will only hold water for no more than thirty-six hours. And this one in particular, the water will go into the pump prior to going into the pond.
Are you gonna do anything about mosquito control if it comes to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
As we already are.
Also, as long as I'm standing here, can I make a comment about that stupidity on Truman?
Yes.
Really, guys? You're doing all of this for what, five houses? Because somebody says they're speeding on that corner? Come on! From Nimitz to Balsam, there are two stop signs and two speed bumps. From Balsam to that corner are two more speed bumps. There's no way anybody's speeding on there. You can't go more than about twenty miles an hour. After your last meeting, I drove back. I didn't see another car, period. And even if there is traffic, so what? It's a public street! It's ridiculous! You're gonna waste all, that's taxpayers' money, isn't it? And you're throwing it around. There are more streets in this town that could use some paving than not. The street in front of the bowling alley is barely paved. You can't drive down any street in this town without hitting multiple potholes. And you're gonna waste how much putting in a street that, like Mary said, may or may not even do anything? That's all.
Thank you. Anything else, Laura?
No. My request is, uh, to approve Resolution number twenty twenty sixteen ninety-one.
Are we doing influence, Captain?
Yes.
Do I make a motion to accept Resolution twenty twenty sixteen ninety-one?
Second.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilor De Sello.
Yes.
Councilor Pariya.
Yes.
Councilor.
Yes.
Next one.
Same spill. I request that you accept Resolution twenty twenty sixteen ninety-two for the First Street Pond and Pumps.
Uh, make an acceptance for, uh, approval for Resolution twenty twenty sixteen ninety-two.
Second. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Pariya.
Yes.
Yes.
Next one.
Sixteen ninety-three for all number.
And that's probably the most important one of all of them.
I agree with this. Number one on the ICP, by the way.
Resolutions match up with the number one.
I know.
Okay.
Do I make a motion to accept, uh, Resolution twenty twenty sixteen ninety-three?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Councilor De Sello.
Yes.
Councilor Pariya.
Thank you, Director.
Councilor Gartner?
Yes.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Miss Manager. Uh, before you is a memo asking for the fox sealing from Seal Master. They have a state contract and we're asking for forty-two tons of material in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. There will not be tax on this project. Uh, this is similar to what we've done on Mesa. So the, it's a three-step process. The first step is that we go in and we patch the large potholes. Then we rent the crack filling machine. We rent, uh, we, we mend the seams, and then this is the final coat that goes on top, and then we'll paint after.
Questions?
Well, I like the way Mesa came up.
How big are the area, Mark?
I don't have the dimensions, but from, uh, from where we stopped on Mesa, where Nimitz meets up with that, it'll go all the way to, uh, Sargent.
Definitely by return to go to San Fe.
It won't go all the way up by the Alcoa, the Seaford High Street, cause that's where it's coming apart. It's right there by Seavis and High Street.
I, it's, it, we're gonna stop, we've gotta do something else about the High Street area. But this.
Still, Nimitz, up around that corner there.
Yes, sir.
It's all coming apart. And it's getting worse. We've had a patching. Why are we gonna stop at Chuck Sargent and not include that other two blocks?
Oh, I see what you're saying. We're, we're stopping right before Mag electric. So we're gonna see.
So it's not Sargent.
Perfect. Yes, sir.
We're stopping at High Street.
High Street. Yes, sir.
Okay. I see now.
Are we gonna be able to fix that little area on High Street?
Little four-way stop there?
Yeah, it's got a, it's got a nice.
They did a pretty good job there when they grinded it down.
Yes.
Same thing along there. I mean, those guys have done a heck of a job, period. That road crew has done just one heck of a job. But we need to fix High Street, or we screwed it up.
I need forty thousand in asphalt, and I need fifteen thousand.
You don't mind it, buddy, cause we screwed it up.
Yes, sir.
We need to fix it, period.
Yes, sir. I, I think I have a plan for that.
I hope so, cause like I said, before we start doing anything else, we need to get that long, we need to get the one on Roosevelt. All of these.
The one on Roosevelt?
We screwed up, we need to fix.
That, that culvert, there's two, uh, thirty, I don't have the exact, but thirty-ish culverts.
Thirty, yeah.
One of them's concrete, it's perfect condition. The one right next to it's metal. It was rotted out, so when we had that water leak, uh, that, that rust bucket just came right out of there when they were digging. And so, we've ordered that material. And so as soon as that five thousand dollar piece of culvert comes in, we'll patch that, we'll place it and patch it. It'll be about a two-day process. But we're, that's been ongoing for about four weeks.
It's still not gonna high, too?
No, sir.
Uh, yeah, anyway, right. I'll make a motion that we, uh, award that fox seal for Nimitz Drive.
Second.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Councilor De Sello.
Yes.
Councilor Pariya.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Resolution twenty sixteen eighty-nine, that's our annual approval of the open meetings. Question? Motion.
Do I make a motion to accept the open meetings resolution for twenty sixteen eighty-nine?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Councilor De Sello.
Yes.
Councilor Pariya.
Yes.
Councilor Gartner.
Yes.
Comments with Council? Laura, you got anything?
Um, I just wanted to note that after our last meeting where we tabled the, um, vacant building ordinance, I did get a few, uh, citizens calling and concerned, um, that we do have options through code enforcement to address those buildings without doing the vacant buildings. So we'll work with our code enforcement office to try to start addressing, um, any and all vacant buildings that are in bad shape.
Council, comments?
You know, this road that you were talking off Mesa, you know, obviously, yeah, we do have a bunch of roads that we need to work on now currently, but I don't think this was something that was gonna be in the plans anytime soon. This is just an idea that, uh, might even relate some of that traffic, might help law enforcement, might help our fire department cut across a lot faster. I don't know. Um, but at some point in time, when you do get a road in that type of area where it is expanding towards Sacolares, uh, there is, will be some room for growth, but I don't know, I don't think we're wanting to do this road like tomorrow. We still got, you know, High Street, that one we have to fix. There's some other streets, you know, under the bowling alley.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, there, there's areas in Grants, and, and I'm gonna give it to the road crew. You know, you go down High Street right here by the park, and, uh, that was, I think, after you guys did the High Street one?
Yes, sir.
And you're just praying, God, stay, stay tight, stay tight. But it looks good. So I think the road crew echo the mayor, uh, they're doing a heck of a job. So thank you, guys.
Great.
Um, yeah, I noticed driving, uh, some of the residential layers, there's weeds growing between the curbs and the asphalt, you know, and that crack, um, in several areas. Are we responsible for, for cleaning that up?
We are, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of those areas. Uh, I noticed, uh, like Washington up to, up to, uh, where's that, Mount Taylor?
Yes.
Along Mesa. And once more, like, there's some weeds growing.
Okay, then. Councilor Pariya.
I guess, uh, uh, I wanna like echo what, uh, Councilor Garcia said about the road crew, they did a darn good job here, man, very good. And, uh, another thing that I let my guard down, that I, a lot of people complaining that I called the code enforcement about three months ago. Nothing was done, so I contacted Mark here last week. And then this way, this weekend was, was the end of it, guys. There was like two places, Mooney, this, I would say, drive out if you've been out there. See, like, they threw a bomb out there, and I, he and I went out there. And I showed you some pictures, didn't I, Rick? This stuff all over the, the whole, the whole lot. And, and I won't tell you, uh, Ronald D. called me, I'm afraid, he said, you used to come and complain when I was a mayor, now I'm complaining, he said. And I said, okay, let's go see it. It's terrible, guys, they would tell you. So, uh, Mark, see what you can do, good?
Yes, sir.
I think that's a hazard there.
It is?
Yes.
Wow! And there's a guy leaving that trailer. He was washing his socks and shoes with a canister with a jug of water, man.
Is that an actual lot there, or?
Yeah, he doesn't have no water there, he ain't got electricity, that, yeah. I don't even know, it's a lot.
Wow, that's bad.
Really bad.
Thank you.
Councilor Gartner?
Uh, I have one question and one, and a comment. Um, I was wondering when that item that we discussed on vacating that road up there on Lubbock was gonna be brought back? I thought, I thought we were gonna be addressing it here soon.
We've got an agenda for the next meeting.
You will?
Okay, have it.
Is that when Shannon had scheduled it for our next meeting?
I'm not sure. She's waiting, um, on something, I'm not sure what it is.
Okay.
What, you know, do you know what it is, Don? She, she just said, man, she's waiting on something, I, I. Go ahead and put it on the desk.
And my, uh, and the comment I have is, I just wanna kind of echo what Barbara Wesley said, uh, I think we as a city need to also get behind this, uh, mytwentycensus.gov. My understanding, only thirty percent of the county has been counted, which is not very good for this county when it comes to receiving funding. There's a phone number that could be, uh, addressed and, uh, well, I know that Chris is involved with it quite a bit and, uh, individuals that complete the, uh, the MyTwentyCensus, whether it be online or, and a number of eight four four three three zero twenty twenty. And you just, and then if you call this other number, take advantage of some gift certificates that, uh, the committee for MyTwentyTwenty is, is giving. I think that, uh, as a city, uh, that's something that very, very much impacts us quite a bit down the road if, if, uh, if our citizens are not counted. So I would like to push that. Uh, the radio station, KMIN, is having, um, all kinds of, uh, remote broadcasts. They had one at El Capitito today. Uh, this come the second, they're gonna have one at Jenny's grooming. I started in one eleven to one, then at the Asian Super buffet on September the ninth, September the twelfth at the inscription coffee, September sixteen Taco Village, uh, September twenty-sixth at the nineteen twelve market. So, um, you know, for those, those that are here tonight, it'd be good for us to make note of that and encourage our neighbors, our friends. And for those that are viewing this on Facebook, you know, you got family or friends here in Grants, you know, encourage them to, uh, to, uh, fill out their census and, you know, we just wanna help, help promote it. Uh, Councilor Garcia, uh, if, I don't know if you've listened to KMIN, his voice is on there pushing for it. And so, anyway, I think it's a good thing that we get, get, I'll get behind this, and that's my final comment.
Can you use your radio voice and?
Promote it.
We will not share us.
We will not share us.
My favorite.
Yeah, I did use my glasses tonight, Eric.
I like this. Okay, guys, my turn. Two weeks ago today, I was in a hearing for a removal of leave from office. Two weeks ago today, okay, I was not allowed to come in here and defend myself, because my attorney recommended that I don't until they could verify what had been said in that quarter. And now I'm being given the green light to defend myself. So where do we start? Okay? First thing was, they had a big old, long deal that they put out, they wanted to get me. Okay? And the first one was that I abandoned the charter. They didn't go after the person that violated the charter, they came after me. That one was thrown out of the court because it was obviously stupid. The second one was I was wearing a gun. Jesse James came over here and called me a liar at a meeting that I wasn't in. He's the liar. Okay? There was no gun. And all they had to do, Beverly Michael, another one, all they had to do was look at KOB four, and you'll see I ain't wearing a gun, both sides of it. Look in the Route sixty-six magazine, I'm there in that interview too. No gun, picture of me on both sides, just totally bull, guys. The third one, now this one here is really interesting, okay? This one here, the judge ruled that, uh, they can recall me because I got pissed off and pushed my chair out and called, called the council of fraud for not standing up for the constitution. And I walked out. So for that one there, they said that you guys could recall me, okay? But this one here is really absolutely hilarious, okay? The judge ruled that before you violated the health order by approving the rodeo. I mean, I didn't violate the order, the, the health order by participating in a protest parade. Okay? That's what the judge ruled. My question to you is, why did I do that? Any one of you walked one year in my shoes from nineteen seventy-nine to this present, and you'll know why I was so upset over that constitution and walked out on you guys. Period. Your hypocrisy that night was ridiculous. Okay? Period. The fourth article, they were trying to say that I was picking a fight with Mr. Garcia when we leaned over to each other, they're watching it on the video over there. And I told Mr. Garcia, democracy at work, get louder. Tried to encourage him to speak up, not to pick a fight. Okay? That's not how you pick a fight in the first place. Number five, violation of criminal statutes, guys. And they had all these statutes lined out for me that I violated, all of them thrown out, cause I didn't violate not one of them. Okay? And the last one, number six, violation of code of conduct, government code of conduct. They threw that one out too because I have the First Amendment right, period. I have the right to say. So this is my point here. People have asked me why I let my hair grow and my beard grow and look like a wild radical. I've been, I've been asked that a few times now. The first time I did this, guys, I got the track hoe that cleans the ditches and it stopped the flooding in this town. The second time I did this, I got money for the ROTC to go to state and on to the nationals. This is the third time. And the reason I'm doing it this time isn't for any money gain or anything like that, it's because I have a kid overseas. And when she went overseas, I told her that I was gonna grow my hair and beard until she came home, and then we'll see what we can do. And anybody that has a son or a daughter serving in the military that goes overseas, you'll realize that I don't care who or where we're at. If I get a phone call, I'm taking it. It might be something happened to one of my kids that's overseas. Anything like that. So for all those people that wanna remove me, for all this crap they threw out there, and what they settled on, they got one paragraph, one meeting, June twenty-second, when I was pissed off when I left the meeting. Okay? Like, you could still, self openly upset about this, okay? I'm a coach in this town. I coached in this town for thirty-plus years. And I only got to coach my own kids for six, guys. For thirty-plus years. And the kids that I got to coach were usually the ones that weren't athletic enough, because none of the other teams wanted them. Okay? And the kids that I got to coach were usually the ones that weren't athletic enough, because none of the other teams wanted them, okay? Or they came from broken homes and nobody knew their parents. Okay, I'm that guy that dropped out of high school in 1979 and joined the United States Marine Corps because I didn't like what happened to the hostages in Iran. I didn't like what was happening in the country. So I decided to make a stand, and I did that. And I came home with an honorable discharge. I worked in the prisons for 25 years, guys, and I retired. And I got elected to the city council in 2006. And since that day, since 2006, when I first got elected, guys, I got elected on making the promise of stopping the flooding and bringing down old buildings. And I did that. I've done that, guys, okay? I ran again, and like I said, promises kept, guys. I ran for, for the seat that I'm sitting in now for mayor in 2014. Also, while I was a councilman, I did a comprehensive plan, 20-year comprehensive plan in the city. It's still being followed to this day, okay? I pushed through and got a master drain plan for this city that is still being followed to this day. All of these projects that you see going on, these are things that got done because of what was pushed through way back then. In 2014, I got elected as mayor by making these following promises, okay? I promised to build a library. I promised to continue, continue to stop the flooding in the town. And I promised to spruce the town up. Promises kept, guys. The North Hills Bridge was built. The George Hannes Bridge was built. First and Second Streets bridges were built. Washington Bridge is being built. The new walking bridge into the high school is being built. The Riverwalk Trail, due to the comprehensive plan, is done. The caboose, the Route 66 arch, all this stuff you see out here, these were all put together by my team to do this for our town. And now you've got these radicals wanting to remove me for two minutes in a meeting where I lost my temper because of what this council did. Period, okay? Now here's the part that really kills me. I promised to everybody out there that I would never lie to you guys. I haven't. You may not like my delivery, you may not like the way I say it, but I have not lied to you. Beverly Michael has lied to you. That Jesse James kid that came here and didn't quarantine for 14 days and nobody asked him about it, he lied to you. And this lady sitting right here committed perjury three times in my hearing. Three times! And the thing about them, they are so ridiculous, why would she do it? The first one, she said I didn't appoint her because two other counselors wanted her. Well, if I don't bring her name up, she doesn't receive a vote, she doesn't get the job. The second one, Kim Carduño is the one that got the plastics in there. Call Kim and ask her who did the spit cards, okay? Then call Freeman, fantastic construction, and ask them how those sneeze guards got in there. They got in there one day, because I made that call. Kim Carduño does not have that kind of stroke, period. And the third one, and the thing that kills me, these things make no difference in what was being said, okay? And the third one is that I never followed up on the gun policies. I asked for the gun policies in March. I held a department head meeting on the gun policies. I asked for them again in May and April. In June, I demanded them in a meeting. In July, I got on the agenda, guns in the workplace, never seen a policy yet. So at the end of the meeting, I called her up, and I tell her, "I want the gun policies," period. Nothing else. In June, what do I get? I get her committing perjury in my hearing with no other reason than to remove me with the far left, period. The leftists. So here's where we're at. I want your resignation, period. You lied in court to remove me from office. If this doesn't happen, guys, then I would expect the four of you to terminate her contract. And if that doesn't happen, then I will seek relief in the courts, period. On that note, I will entertain a motion to close this meeting down. Only once.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Hucero?
Yes.
Counselor Paliya?
Yeah.
Counselor Roar Dark?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight. That's the way it went down, guys. No lie, no gold.
It's a lie.
Yeah? Well, we got the transcripts to the court, so let me see. Yeah, it is. Like I said, we got the transcripts, we're ready. I couldn't even say anything until my lawyer, okay?